To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. It's good to see some people here. The first thing on the agenda, due to scheduling conflicts between Easter meeting, we're going to move the if coordinating to the 27th, that I'll be Wednesday. Okay?
So, just for the record that everybody knows, I will not be attending that meeting. I had scheduled a training in New York State employer academy. I had to pay for it two months ago. And that is that week. That's Monday through Friday that week. And I'm not opposed to you moving it. That's perfect. I completely understand. It's vacation time. I just want to let the record know that I will not be there.
I appreciate your telling us that.
Tom, I mean, I get you both, too.
Okay.
Sure.
I'll still sign the bill on Monday morning.
We accept the resignation of Mary Ellen Castleman from the museum, effective April 30th. I want to read to you what she wrote. She's been our historian here for 10 years. Please accept this letter as formal notification of my resignation, position of town historian, effective April 30th. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to have held this position for the past 10 years. I have so very much enjoyed furthering my knowledge and love of Messina in order to share it with the community in a variety of ways. However, as the old adage states, time waits for no woman. I like that. I feel I need to pursue some of my own goals for the amount of time that I'm given to accomplish them. These include, but are not limited to, working on a book of local church history, increasing my time as parish nurse, and perhaps going somewhere longer for a couple of hundred months. I will do everything possible to orient the new historian in order to facilitate a smooth transition for her or for him in this position. If there's anything else you would likely do, please let me know. Again, thank you for the wonderful gift of 10 years in this role. It's been challenging, fun, exciting, and extremely rewarding. So, you can imagine that the board, the museum board, will be putting out an ad of some sort with probably doing interviews. Debbie and Tom, you're both liaison, so you know when those ads are going to be going up.
I think the goal of having her resign just a little bit earlier, to submit her letter of resignation and stuff, was so that we could get it through the town board here and then they could go ahead and advertise, so.
Yeah, advertise and have your interviews. Typically, it's at least three people from the board of the museum board, and then you come back with your recommendation. When I was in the museum for 14 years, that's how we did it, hiring two people. But, you know, let them know about the job, all the hit calls, paid hours.
Sue, question, do we have to formally accept that resignation?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because she's a town employee.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept your resignation.
I'll second it. Accept your resignation.
Debbie and Tom, thank you. All in favor, even more regretfully?
Hi.
Hi.
Good. All right, we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is for the Messina mega reunion, which is the first weekend in August. We have Lori Collins here. Lori, feel free to come up and share us what's going on.
Okay. Thanks for having us, Sue. What I'm here tonight for is basically just to create awareness and excitement for our event that we're having in August. We are looking to, one of the reasons that we got together was just to try to bring people back to Messina and boost our economy. All of us love Messina, and that's why we are here and why people want to come back. So, we are hoping, right now, to get around 2,000 people to attend. So, along there, that will boost our hotels, our restaurants, gas, everything. Because most people, half of the people that are going to be coming are going to be from out of town. So, they either have family here. I know I've helped people get hotels and breakfast in the area. They're planning on staying for at least a week in our community, so, which is a wonderful asset to have. So, we do have, we do have some events going on, starting on Friday. We will be starting off with a golf tournament in Messina at the country club. That evening, we will be breaking up into 10 individual class participating with their own classes in different, 10 different establishments in Messina as well. Saturday morning, we're going to be doing a memorial service at 9 o'clock at the high school, and they'll be doing a trail walk out there. The school will be doing also tours and graciously, or, well, I'll get into that next, but, and then we will be having on Saturday afternoon at 4 o'clock will be our block party, which will be held on Water Street. We're going to be blocking off from Glenn Street to Phillips Street. And that whole area will be where, and it will be very secure. We have a security person involved and all that. So, and then Sunday, all 10 classes have graciously decided to go to the town beach. We didn't realize that was going to happen, but we kind of put a thing out there, and every class decided to stay together and be together on Sunday as well. So then, as of right now, we have over 300 people who have signed up six months early, so, which we feel that that's about right on board where we should be. Also, we have a lot of community people, businesses that have reached out to us to get involved. For instance, the Rotary Pancake are going to do a Rotary Pancake that day at junior high on Saturday morning. So, everybody grew up with Rotary Pancakes, so that's a great event. Also, the Hall of Fame for Messina Central has reached out to us, and they want to have it during that Saturday at 1:00, which, so if anyone knows anybody from the 80s that would like to go into the Hall of Fame, which is a wonderful thing. Also, the Amnats have reached out to us. They want to do an event, a picnic, for all vets or active duty military. So, that's really a great thing. And I've reached out to a couple of people. I don't know if you know David Poyer. He graduated with me, but he, he just retired a couple of years ago out of the military, and he's really big. So, he was really excited to see that somebody was going to reach out and do something special for our military. Also, we have the Bike Club, the Messina Bike Club. Eric is, somebody reached out and asked about doing a bike run, so Eric graciously is going to help us with that. So, that's just one of the other things. The Police Activities League are planning something as well. Local businesses, like your restaurants and some of our stores also. And then one of our biggest ones is the St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce has really stepped up. They are planning on doing sidewalk sales. We're going to have an artisan sale that they're doing that day. So, it's giving all of the people coming into Messina something to do, also for the people that live in Messina. That's one of the good things. Anybody can go to any of our events except our block party. That will be, you have to have a special bracelet to go to that, so that's the only thing. Also, one of the, on Saturday during our block party, the chamber is going to host a panel about talking about people, if you're interested maybe in investing back into Messina. They're going to talk about grants. They're also going to have guest speakers of people who have gotten grants. I know you know Bill Fiacco. That's where we're going to be hosting our reunion down there. So, he's going to have it in the basement of his building. So, that panel will be open to anyone who would like to have come back to Messina and maybe invest like Bill did himself, so. That's great. And right before I left, I just had a call from a radio station out of Potsdam. They want to come onboard, and they are an 80s radio station. I don't know who they are. I didn't get that much from her because I was in a hurry. But they want to come and spend the whole entire day downtown doing live recordings and also at the block party, and maybe on Sunday as well, because it's the 80s group. So, they really want to do that as well. So, basically, I'm here because we really would like the board, Messina board, to, you know, be a, you know, be a sponsor with us, you know, promote us. You know, you have driven the wellness, awareness in our community as known as the capital, fishing capital of the world, so we could be the mega reunion of the world. Why not, right? So, we were just, you know, again, it's about success, bringing people back here. Let's, they come here because they loved Messina, and there's still so many people. So, we would like to really provide a reason for them to return. So, if we can get something going this same week every year, that's been our whole goal as well, is to try to do this. Also, provide points and pride of all Messinas. So, how we believe that Messina Town Board can come onboard with us is help us spread the word of the reunion. Also, one of our last remaining organizational elements that we need is liability insurance. And that's where we are looking to see if possibly there's either two ways. It's to include the mega reunion on your town insurance as an additional insured person or, or an underwriter. Basically, the estimated cost for an underwriter is, we've checked in our local insurance company here, is about $2,000. So, we are looking for that. You know, if you are thinking that we are going to have 2,000 people come or even 1,000 people, and they're going to spend well over $100 to come here, so you're going to receive that back in our community. You know, we have reached out to, from Potsdam all the way to the reservation. Very, very, everyone is so on board. We have people calling us all the time, what can I do? So, basically, we just want you to promote us and get the word out there, because it's so exciting and, I know, Tom's an 80s graduate.
Yep.
So, yeah, Brenda. So, we have a few onboard, so. But there is, there's going to be a lot going on. We have bands coming Saturday. Actually, it's our band that we had when we were in high school. Double Axl.
Yeah.
Double Axl's playing.
Double North.
Double North, yeah.
Double Religions.
Oh, yes. Yep, they did every one of our school dances when we were in the 80s, so they are onboard. We have some special, that people don't know about, the little things that are going to be going. And also, Sue, retired teacher. All the teachers will be invited as well. So, again, it's another gathering to bring teachers back together that haven't seen each other in years as well, so. So, I hope you do promote us and you're onboard.
Well, with all the meetings we have, can we hopefully have a written article on that?
I hope so, yes. Because we need it. We need people to register. And we are, we do have a website, and it's messinamega.org, and it's great. One of the nice things here, we have about 100 people working on this committee, and probably the least amount of people are here in Messina. My husband said, why is Nancy coming home? Because I'm doing. But we have people all over the United States working on this. The lady that did up our website, Chris Canarium, I don't know if you remember the Canarium family that was here in the 80s, but she has done a wonderful job, and every week they change up stuff on it. They're asking questions. We've got a music blog on there. There's just so much. Party places, everything you can imagine that they reach out.
Jason Hendricks, who does our explore Messina website.
Yes.
He's been doing some of that, but give him more information.
Oh.
Anything at all.
Jason Hendricks.
Give it to Jason. He'll take care of that.
Yeah, okay. Oh, great, yeah. Definitely. That's very good. And I know Nancy's in contact with you quite often, so.
Yes. Thank you very much. Wish you the best. And we look forward to it.
Thanks, Lori.
All right. Thank you.
One question, Lori.
Oh, yeah.
Did you approach the village with us?
Yes.
Is there a chance that they could split a cost with us?
They very well could be.
Instead of us doing it all, maybe, if we can do it.
Okay.
I'm not saying we're going to do it.
If we can, yeah.
But I'm saying, if this was feasible, have you approached the village to possibly split that cost?
I haven't done that to split, because it was just something that we were aware of that we should be getting, is the insurance. We have contact.
Totally.
And they are onboard with everything. They've been very gracious. We've, I've spoke to them.
With permits and everything.
Everything, yeah, so.
That'd be something we could split and do it together.
Exactly. That would be wonderful.
We'll have to research that.
Right, well, if we can do it, that's what I say.
Yeah. We'll have to take a look.
Right, okay.
I say you can, so I say if.
All right, but that would be, that would be great, so. Any other questions or?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much, Lori.
Yep.
The next presentation is the Town Messina Water Study Project. Matt and Anthony, please come forward and share with us all of your answers here.
Does this work with those over here?
Oh, sure, sure.
So, I'm Matt Cooper. This is Anthony Young. We're engineers and partners of Judas. We were hired by the town last year to do a feasibility study, to evaluate extending public water to areas of the town that are not currently served. So, a study of this type really needs to gauge two different things. Is it wanted and is it cost feasible? So, we took on two separate efforts through this to ultimately provide you with an engineering report in the end that identifies, you know, the answer to those two questions. So, to, to gauge whether or not it's wanted, we sent out an interest survey. And that survey asked a number of questions that, actually, the questions are on the second page of this. We want to understand, do people have any issues with their water source now? Whether they have a shore well, whether they have drilled wells, dug wells, whatever it is, do you have supply problems? Do you have water quality problems? We want people to start thinking about that in terms of would public water make sense for it. We also like to gauge, you know, how much they're willing to pay for it. Because in the end, when we do this study, if it's not affordable, and affordability is, is in the end determined by those users. They're the ones that are going to decide whether it's not affordable, if it's affordable to them or not. You know, we have some water districts where the user rate is 1,200, and everybody's ecstatic to have water, because it's an area where there's really poor groundwater quality. Other areas where, you know, especially villages, don't like, they've got a very old water system. Most of their infrastructure is bought and paid for, and they don't like to see their rates more than $4,500 a year. So, the affordability in the end is determined by the end users, and they will have to vote for this district if you do present it to them. So, the interest survey results that we have are on the first page. So, the blue shaded areas on the map are the areas where you have existing public water. The yellow is areas where we did not receive a response. And then green was a favorable response, and red was a no, that they are not interested in public water. So, we had a total of 189 responses with an overall favorability of 56%. So, what we'd like to try to do is, we try to capture as much of the green as possible. In the end, you can never really shape a district that has 100% support and 0% opposition. It just, it doesn't happen. I mean, you're all elected officials. Did you get 100% of the votes? You can't ever get anybody to agree on everything 100%. But you try to capture the areas where there is a majority of favorability. And then we move into the next part, which is evaluating, what would the cost be to build the infrastructure to serve these different areas? And then we look at what might be probable for funding. You know, that's really something that sets us apart from, from other firms, is that, you know, we really have a way to connect our municipalities with the funding sources, with the grant sources, whether it be EFC grants, WIA grants, USDA World Development Grants, CDBG grants. You know, each of those has its own set of eligibility criteria, and each tries to focus on funding certain type of projects. We try to align your project with as many of those sources as possible. So, once we looked at the areas of favorability and then started doing cost estimates to serve those, we started to try to shape it into defined projects. We, you know, and, and this was a, took a lot of iterations. Well, what if we ran it this far down the road, and then this far down the road? How much does the project cost rise to serve this? Obviously, the more people you can connect with the least amount of infrastructure, the best the numbers are going to turn out at the end, right? You've got more people sharing the cost when you have a higher population density within any given service area. And please don't interpret any of these results yet as cast and stone. This is still a work in progress in developing this report, trying to get a sense of what is affordable, where do people want it the most. We're still gauging project size from a dollar standpoint with the funding that's available currently today. So, we're evaluating these potential projects in the current funding environment, because that funding environment changes constantly. The rules come out, you know, the president's elected, wants to do a big stimulus fund, so it changes year to year. We're evaluating these potential projects in today's current funding environment. So, when we get to the end and you look at what we have shown as potential funding, it's what's available here and not. We've tried to only look at areas that were under $1,000 a year. Somewhere in that neighborhood, and again, it varies depending on how badly people want water. But somewhere in that neighborhood is usually the threshold. Maybe it's 800, maybe it's 1,000, maybe it's 1,200. So, we've kind of looked at 1,000 and under as a goal for these that we looked at. And again, keeping the favorability over 50%. So, project number one, that you have three pages in, contemplates an $8.89 project that's mostly on South Racket, and that results in a $964 per year cost per EDU. If you're not familiar with that term EDU, it's Equivalent Dwelling Unit. So, when we present the report to the different funding agencies and to the regulatory agencies, they want to be able to compare your project, apples to apples, with someone else's project from Jefferson County or from Allegheny County or from anywhere else in the state that they're considering funding. So, you have to equate your population in your area served into EDUs, Equivalent Dwelling Units. Equates to a single family household. So, if you've got a duplex, it's two EDUs. If you have a restaurant, you have to look at their seating, or if you have existing water usage records, you can equate their water usage into a number of EDUs.
So, as far as, like, especially project number one, $964 a year? They'd be paying additionally each person, each house?
You say additionally. They're not paying any water usage rates now.
Right, but they'd be paying an additional out of that? So, of the $964, tell me how this works. Would that be an additional $80 a month for that household?
It would be approximately 80 a month on a water.
Right.
Which would replace whatever they have now for their water. So, if they have a well, they're pumping, they have electricity usage, once every 10 to 20 years, they're replacing the well pump. So, it would offset that. Areas that don't currently have fire protection that are served by this would have fire protection. I'm not an insurance agent, but I have had insurance agents tell me it affects your premium $50 to $100 per year in that range, depending on your proximity to hydrants or fire department. So, it's not a pure $80 a month increase. It's offset by, you no longer have to run your well pump, and you could save on your property insurance.
Do you have some kind of calculations that show what that normally might be? Just to help people out, because otherwise it looks like you're paying $80 a month to get water. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. But, I mean, you only 51% favorable at the end on the first one. But if it was going to save people $200, $300 a year because of, you know, what happens in their wells, that we've got to replace their wells and all that sort of stuff, there must be some kind of calculation out there.
We can calculate that. It's going to, it's going to have several assumptions in it, you know, depending on how deep their well is.
It's not going to be exactly, but.
What horsepower the well pump is. You know, are they using 100 gallons a day or 200 gallons? But we can approximate something like that, just at least have something out there and just qualify that number with, you know, our assumption was quarter horsepower pump or half horsepower pump or whatever it may be.
Is that a minimum gallons though? Like, is that $80 a month for 3,000 gallons?
Well, it's, it's an approximation of water usage. So, it's based on using 140 gallons per day. If you have just a couple living in a home, they may only be using 60 or 70 gallons per day.
Tom, on the back page.
Oh, is it numbered? Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, the cost is made up of two components. One is the debt payment to cover the cost of constructing the district and whatever loans remain after, after the grant is used up. And the other is usage. And we kind of qualify those numbers with the sum with the cost of $495 per 1,000 gallons of usage, using an average.
How solid are these grant, I'm sorry, Keith, for the question, so. How solid are the grant numbers? Likely is it that these grants would be available?
I can't make any predictions. Again, the funding environment changes all the time. These are the amounts that you could be eligible for under the existing program rules. So, the WIA grant is a maximum $3 million grant.
These are maximum grants.
They'd be the maximum you qualify for with that size project. As you can see, project number three is a smaller project. The WIA grant decreases. It's a maximum $3 million or 60% of project cost after all grant, other grants are subtracted out.
Just to quit the, the project one, so the $964 is the debt and is also the water?
And the water usage.
Okay, so the $80 would be the debt plus the water usage.
Correct. That's all in.
All in.
All in, yep.
And this is a turnkey system, so it's water main and prices to go to the house, to install the water service line all the way to the house.
So, they wouldn't have to pay for it from the house to the line?
Correct, yep.
That's all.
And what we've run the numbers here.
Yep.
Yep. Other towns choose to just stop at the right of way limit and make the homeowner construct from there to their house. This set of numbers we ran is, like you said, turnkey, full connection.
From the turn box to the house.
Correct.
Something else, like, the last time you were in a Zoom meeting, it showed 499 respondents who couldn't respond. At that time, it was only 26% of response. Now, this time, it's showing more favorability, but it's only a 38% response. So, what happened to the other 62% of people that couldn't respond? I mean, should we do all this for 38% of people?
If you look up statistically, you know, interest surveys only usually garner 20, 30% responses. You know, you tend, when we send out these surveys, you tend to draw out the opposition more than the favorability. So, the people that are opposed tend to respond at a higher rate than the people in favor.
If they respond all, yeah. But tell me something, can the current water supply here, or the waters that support any one of these or all three of these?
Well, we, we will need ongoing conversations with the village. Preliminary, they have excess capacity.
They definitely need to go.
Yeah, because you jeopardize the water supply.
There's a lot of other, obviously, if you go through, there's a lot of other things too, which is maintenance.
Yeah, yes.
As, as a town, we don't do our own maintenance. We contract the village, but you're opening up a much larger area, so the village may not be able to maintain all that. So, then you've got to look at, what do you do or how that happens.
And we, and frankly, if you pay the village, or could that lead to this?
That's built into that water rate, correct.
Could you get into that bill?
Because the village.
Well, I can't answer that question. I don't know. I wasn't here when that water line went in and all that was all set up. There's an agreement that they maintained it.
Correct.
But what I'm saying is, if the village, it may be beyond their capacity to maintain with their people. So, that means either the town is going to have to go hire or contract with somebody when we have a water line break, maintenance on hydrants. I'm just, just saying, all that's got to be thought about. So, there needs to be a lot, a lot of discussion if you're going to go down the road with this, on how we do it.
When was the last engineering study for this water expansion?
That the town performed previously?
Yeah.
I am not aware of that. We haven't done one.
I think, the only one I could find, when I did some digging, was 2013, that there was a study done and comparable results, same, same areas, so.
So, projects two and three, again, showing extension of different areas. Project two would be approximately $8 million. And probably also the email I sent today with this update, one of the differences is the dollar value in reviewing. In reviewing what we had in there for estimates, we pumped it up another ten percent. You know, we're seeing the effects of inflation more and more. We're bidding projects, we're seeing the numbers come in higher and higher. So we padded these numbers a little bit more at this time, just to make sure that with an extra ten percent, we're still within the range of an affordable project. Obviously, we won't know the results until, what if you move forward with any of these and it actually goes out to bid? My estimate doesn't mean anything, it's the contractor's number in the end that means everything. And this shows an increased favorability. This area serves a fifty-nine percent favorability.
How long would it take to design and put this together?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, you know, when we talk about these potential projects, keep in mind that these projects have a lifespan of three to four to five, maybe six years. From the time we have this conversation now to the time water is running through pipes in any one of these areas is likely three to five years. From finalizing the report, submitting funding applications, waiting maybe a round or two or three rounds of funding cycles to get enough grant to make it work, to designing it, bidding it and constructing it, it's quite a long time. Then project three has the highest favorability. It's a smaller project at three point seven million with a potential user rate as low as seven ninety-six. So we talk about the next steps. Once we finalize the report and we identify projects, the board would have to decide if there are projects within that report you want to pursue. Between now and then, there's further coordination necessary. We have to iron out things like the supply, what the operation and maintenance would be. Because if there are additional costs beyond what we projected associated with those, it needs to be in the report now. That cannot be a surprise down the road. My understanding is the four dollars and ninety-five cent per thousand gallons rate now covers that operation and maintenance cost for the existing users that are out there. So we carry that on in a linear fashion for these other potential districts. The WEA grant itself does require you to form the water district in order to apply and complete the bond resolution. Now, often asked the question, how can, how can we form a district if we don't have the grant yet to build the district? What happens when you prepare the district formation documents and the bond resolution documents is you incorporate in there this funding scenario with that resulting user rate. If you cannot satisfy that funding scenario with X amount of grants to equal Y user rate, you cannot move forward with the district. That is the safeguard those district residents have when they vote yes for a district that you don't have any grants for yet. They have the safeguard of knowing, even if they're voting yes for that district, you can't construct that district. You can't start incurring that debt until you've satisfied the amount of grants identified in the district formation documents. So that is the protection they have. You can't say, well, we didn't get quite as many grants as we thought. It's not going to be seven hundred and ninety-five dollars a year, it's going to be fifteen hundred dollars a year. That cannot happen.
So if your, if your actual total project cost, because of the way inflation and craziness in construction has, jumped up a million dollars and you, you're not going to be able to get anywhere near that grant money to cover that percentage.
You would have to, if you wanted to pursue the project with that amount of grant money, with that new increased cost, you would have to go back to the voters and you would have to have another district formation vote at that higher user rate. Or get enough additional grant to bring that user rate back down to cover that increase in bid cost. But again, if you form the district at seven hundred and ninety-five dollars per user, you have to get enough grants to satisfy that or you cannot move forward with the district. It just sits on paper.
That applies both to the cost for, for the residential users and the poll, I suspect. There's a hard cap on it and it's built right into the statute.
And you can't exceed either of those without going back to those voters. So again, this was just a progress update. If you start thinking about this, we will have further updates as we continue to fine tune these numbers, work with, frankly, talk to the village about the supply, understand what operation maintenance costs may be. You can do a second mailing of the interest survey if you'd like to try to boost the response. Again, I, I think if you just Googled interest survey result, you'd find twenty to thirty percent is quite typical. It's very disappointing, but it's typical with just a single outreach.
Usually, I hear that's a good advice upon demand for each new water district.
We do have that calculated, yeah. I don't have it in these figures here, but, you know, it's a hundred and forty gallons per day per EDU. And we showed the number of EDUs for each of these districts. So you can just extend that out into a daily or annual figure. But I can, I can provide those to you.
And again, like Matt said, none of these are set in stone. If you want to see other, other areas shortened or lengthened, we can do that. That was just our, you know, our first look, present to you what options we're looking at right now.
So what happens if you did form a district, whether it was project one, two or three, and there's opposition in that district, but yet it passed? What happens to those people that choose not to use the water? Is there a cost for them or just no cost at all and then the EDUs go down? How does that work?
So if you are in a district, you are considered benefited. If you are benefited, you have to pay toward the debt service. You would have to pay toward the debt service EDU charge. You would have to pay usage charge if you didn't purchase or use any water. But if you're in a district, you are benefited and if you're benefited, you have to contribute towards that.
Because of fire protection and all that, got you.
Because that benefit is available to use.
Right, got you.
Is there any point in which the customer demand should be outs, the system supply?
Not with these service areas we're looking at. These are well within what the village currently has available.
Do you have any idea where the village plant capacity is at in terms of its? Me? We need to have that discussion. We, we need to, you know, maybe when you guys get closer to finalizing this or prior to that, we need to come and we need to sit down with the village and, you know, essentially, you know, the DPW superintendent along with Steve Daley, the water supervisor and probably the operator of the water treatment plant. And, you know, can we do this? How's it affect us and all of that? And we need to have that discussion.
And does the current water tower, would that support this as well?
So there's, there's things we need to talk about.
So in project one, real quick, that loops back to the North Racket. So that'll now become a loop, or the map is cut off. Project one.
Yeah, you could come across in either project one or project two. Obviously, the loops are advantageous in operating the system. If you can source supply, avoid dead ends, stagnant lines.
Right, yeah. And then project two makes it out to the border?
That's why I was just wondering, is that project two, is that heading towards the old Reynolds plant?
Yep, correct.
Is that the dead end?
Yep. So that hits the racer site, that hits the border crossing and that hits into the old Reynolds. Right, am I seeing that right?
Correct.
Okay, we prefer to do each other the double government to give us the money for the water in that area.
We've had several conversations with GSI. Of course, not, nobody at that level has authority to commit any money.
It's the same, it's the same with the power authority. They want water at their substation and they want, anyway, want water.
Sorry.
Well, and to understand, you know, the town, the town as a whole does not pay for these. Whatever costs are incurred for these districts stays within the district. The district has to be its standalone financial entity. It has to be able to cover all of its own costs. It cannot be, my statute can't be shared with the rest of the town.
So we have one, the Messina District, so it's going to be a different named district?
Correct.
Correct?
So you can mess the data and everything. We will, we'll do the supply, connecting it all up. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope, that's it. Again, we just wanted to begin to open the dialogue and begin the conversation about this and everybody thinking about it.
Yes, and if there was any questions from the league tonight, we've got to pick up other questions. We need to get them all together and then have more conversation.
I get more of your names again.
Matt Cooper.
Okay, Pat, and is there a second?
Second.
All four? Any, any against? No? All right, we need to schedule a public hearing, again, to extend the moratorium on the copper currency mining. A motion, we'd be doing it at the next meeting, which would be April, the twenty-seventh, June? April twenty-seventh.
Is there any requirements of what time do we have to have another meeting on this?
The moratorium ends April thirtieth, so should we be cautious in having the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I think we should. I think, just as, we're hearing rumors that the state is going to enact a toll on more power in, but there's no guarantees of that and we're not, we're not ready to, to finalize.
And maybe I don't have a lot more information, regulations, et cetera, too. So we have a motion.
So move.
Okay, Tom is in second by Adrian. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? All right. Amending the town budget, decrease the amount given to the BDC from seventy-five thousand to forty thousand annually. Do you want to say anything ahead of time? I know two people have mentioned you things to me.
I do. In the beginning of this, you know, I'm new to this and some kind of new to, we met. We met to try and figure out, we met with Jim to see, you know, what's going on because we're trying to meet everybody. And we asked him questions. We asked about job description and he said he didn't have one. So he was, he was going to go work on one. Then on February third, I sent him an email, he sent back an email on February the seventh, saying the BDC is a separate corporation, so job description should be set by BDC. I have a problem with that, but it seems to make sense. However, we've been looking for an update in regards to what do we get for the seventy-five thousand dollar investment we had last year in regards to the BDC? And we really haven't gotten anything from any answers. Looking for an update on projects, looking for an update on the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, grant writing, apparently they don't, they don't do grant writing. So we had some questions about what are we actually, what are we getting for our seventy-five thousand dollar investment, which I think we all should know what we're getting for that. And until we get some answers, and specifically, we haven't had any answers unless somebody else has got the answers, I would agree with this recommendation to make this change on this budget.
And really, we're, we are pursuing different avenues right now because of our financial problems. We are looking at other people who are willing to step forward and write grants with us. I wouldn't even mind having a partnership even with the village. I mean, they had an excellent grant writer. Who knows, maybe we could go down that avenue. But we are reaching out to people to help us write some grants to bring some more revenue in. And we have to use some of that money for that, for sure. Anyone else please say comment?
I certainly agree with what Pat has said. Educating myself, I went back and looked through BDC minutes and things like that. And it's always like they're going to, they're in the process of, and nothing really comes of it. The comprehensive plan comes up, you know, quite frequently. Contract with the town, I don't know that we have any contract with them ever. There's just a lot of stuff. And actually, at one of the BDC meetings, they talked about they wanted to get away from the grant writing part of it and continue on with what they're, truly their goals should be. So, I mean, if we're not going to be able, we need the grant writing. That's first and foremost for us at this point. So, you know, I don't have an issue with decreasing the funding.
At this particular time, yes. I mean, if things come up and we get other information and we do get some of these answers and stuff, I wouldn't be opposed to relooking at it next year.
Sure, sure. And again, we could certainly revisit it. We still support it with forty thousand. And again, maybe in a few months, that feels a look better and we can bring it back up to the, you know. Adrian, do you want to say anything at all? And Tom?
I was on the BDC before, I, I, for a year or two. I think they do a lot of good things back when I was on the board. But I do agree that I don't think it's the exact kind of fit that we have at this particular time. We do need grant writers and we do need, I would like to see the BDC go in a different direction. That's why sort of wavering on the amount of money that we give them, I, I'm not for, I'm not against decreasing it because we definitely need the money. I'm a little bit hesitant to do it because I think if they do go in the right direction, I think it could be a big benefit to the, to the town, but.
And we're not taking all of it out there. We're not going to do that. That's why we have to still have that support.
Right. I just would, me personally, I would like to see a little bit more time before we did something, but if someone makes a motion, we'll roll from there. But being just like I've been to one meeting so far this year and I would like to see, I don't really know what direction they're going in. Just like we said before, we really don't know what direction and what they're doing. And I hate to like make a cut like that without having the input.
Yeah, with, with my seven years' experience of prior boards here, this topic comes up every time, budget time. And having joint meetings with the village, having meetings with the whole board of BDC, these thoughts have come up a year after year after year. I will tell you with the addition of Trish Wilson at NIPA, with her, her job duty's out there, with the IDA at the county, I believe, I believe the business development corporation should be more of a regional approach. So I think with those, those two entities right there, and, and what I've learned is if any business is coming to Messina, the first call is the supervisor or the mayor. So I, I think, and then, of course, the planning board at the county has to start everything. So the county has to pretty much start everything and then it trickles down into that. So I believe as, as one member here, I, I, I believe a regional approach to business development is more effective than having this BDC because I don't think we fund it properly. It needs a lot more money to do the right job. It needs to be able to send people to job sites or job areas, to whatever else, and to do it right, to bring businesses here. And we can't afford to fund that. That's, it's obvious. I mean, the village stopped funding it a lot four or five years ago. They got out of the business and there was talk at that time the town was going to get out too, but we, we hold out, we held on. So again, my opinion only, I think it should be more of a regional. We're very fortunate, NIPA stepped up and put Trish in that position there. We got Patrick Kelly at the IDA. I think that, I, I think the regional approach is where we really need to be because we cannot fund the BDC correctly to where we can afford to send those guys out and go after businesses coming to Messina. So I would be in favor of decreasing the amount to forty thousand. I'm cutting them totally to see if they want to come back with more of a strategic plan and, and to tell us how they're going to do better at getting businesses coming to Messina. And I'm not opposed to that either, so.
See, one of the things that was sort of batted around is this is going to be basically closing the BDC. I know that they have two hundred thousand dollars on their balance sheet and cash. That's not accounted for for anything in particular. So this is not going to crush them and close them out. But I still think, like you, I agree. We need to, we need, we also need to see, if you make any investment, you need to see what it's, what it's getting. And we can't see anything in regards to investment. I think a more reasonable approach on some of this stuff may, may be beneficial. There's a lot, where I see it, there's a lot of committees everywhere focusing on this, that, economic committees and all these other things. So maybe we can put some of these things together so we're not having so many.
When we did that joint committee, committee between the village and the town, the year that the. When we did that joint committee, uh, committee between the village and the town, the year that the village stopped funding them, that very thing was said, that it'll not be able to continue because it's not funded properly. It's correct, it's not funded, it needs a lot more money to do the, the job correctly. And so, that being said, they backed out, went a different route, they hired their grant writing firm, and with a, with a unwritten rule, as we, we fund the BDC, we can use their grant writer, well, I don't know how productive that is then. So, I think we need to take a minute, take a look at it, if they want to bring strategic play to us, you know, let's, you know, we'll, we'll look at it again.
Sure.
But, uh, for now, I make the motion that we, uh, that we make this change in regards to our budget.
And I'll second it.
You have a second? Okay, um, Tom? Yeah, your name?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll stop, so you now, Mr.? Okay, thank you. Anyone against? Authorizing security badge request replacement policy, we have our little security badges, and, um, we don't want them lost too easily, or having to be replaced often, so that's what we came up with, this badge request, uh, replacement policy, which I think certainly helps out. I mean, our badges have, we have several areas in our building here that would have access, we don't want to lose those, so. We're putting that in hopefully to, um, secure or inform people here that, uh, pull down to that badge door. Um, could we have a motion to accept that?
Almost.
Devin is second. Okay, Adrian? All in favor?
Aye. Anyone against?
Okay, authorizing the board to restore the deputy clerk provision to full-time. Um, it's been historically a full-time job for years, and we'd like to continue in that mode, there's a lot to it, as we've all seen our job descriptions. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Okay, Pat, in a second?
I'll start now.
Adrian, thank you.
Where, Ms. Stewart, where are we getting the money to fund this?
Um, I got, talked to Brenda about that, we have money that's been given to us a couple of times, Brenda.
Yeah, you have the, uh, high flow money. That we got in for fifty-four thousand, one seventy-five fifty-six. Fifty-four thousand? Fifty-four thousand, I got that far.
Five thousand and six.
One seventy-five fifty-six.
And that's where?
High flow.
High flow?
That we got to share. I have the figures, if you want, if anybody wants the figures, what it's gonna be during the full-time.
Probably with, 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 uh, benefits and everything, you probably got, you know, about thirty thousand or so roughly? And there's, so there'd be nothing, that high flow water to cover this position going from half-time to full-time?
Yeah, to get it back to our asking.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, we had motions, now let's go then, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? And before I forget, um, John Lynch, who's our deputy clerk, we should have introduced him in the beginning.
Can we just take that as a Monday?
Yes.
My favorite. Yes!
No, you can't speak. No.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Oh, well, hopefully it was great to you.
Okay, the next item is hiring, uh, approving the hiring of motor equipment operator for the highway department, with a starting salary twenty-three thirty-seven per hour.
Sense of replacement.
Correct.
Yes, make a motion to.
Second.
And second by Tom? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Anyone against? Approving Tom, it's gonna spring clean updates from May second through May thirty-first.
Hello there.
I'll make a motion, take that. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Pat, on favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, passed, good. All right, authorizing the acceptance of the twenty-twenty-one Air ninety-nine grant documentation, there's a lot of documentation here for, under the twenty-twenty-one aviation capital grant program. The grant will provide over one million dollars, and the cost for town will be a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. CNS engineers, if they can work, it'll provide more detailed, project will be for twenty-twenty-three. And Fred, can you explain why it's always later on?
Well, obviously, we just got a word, we were just accepting a grant, this grant went, we applied for this early last year, twenty-twenty-one, so now it's gotta be designed, and actually, we have, we have four years to act on this one. So it's basically called the old hangar, it's, it's trying to do something with that building, uh, you know, potentially maybe putting a door on the hangar so we can lease it out for, uh, somebody wants to park a plane overnight, it's a large hangar. Uh, trying to do something with the, uh, we used to call it the pilot's lounge, um, that side of the building, the roof leaks, and it, it, it's, you know, probably been the same look for fifty years, so.
And I've seen it, it's in tough shape.
Yeah, tough shape, well, the raccoons are here at the house, so. First thing we gotta do is figure out how we keep the raccoons out. But it's, uh, it's, so we've got roughly four years to, to work on getting this implemented.
So move. Second.
Tom, and then Pat?
I've worked out there.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? So it's passed, okay? Authorizing rental of the storage space, uh, for the museum at the St. Lawrence Center Mall at a rate of five hundred dollars per year for the period of April first, twenty-twenty-two, through April first, twenty-twenty-three. The current lease, which paid and expires the end of May, um, this year, and the new lease will run again from April through April. And right now, they're working on, um, taking a look at what they do have stored over there, to go through the regular process of data, and to dig session some items, and then go look at the wood out there.
So this is compared to the price that all the work on?
Yeah.
Yes. It's easily, it's all on the main floor, there's no going up and down the stairs, it's.
It'll be in the old Hallmark store.
It's the old.
Good job.
For the, uh, motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
No doubt, second by Tom, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Anyone against? Transfers and amendments.
So move.
Okay, Tom, second. I guess, second?
Who's second?
He's trying to beat me up.
Adrian, and all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Warrants. Adrian, yeah.
Second.
Because there are monthly auditors right now, so they kind of have to do those, so, we think, but, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nobody against, okay. Financial reports, would you like to talk to us about anything, except we're reading several pages of our finances? Oh, committee reports, a town highway?
Highway Department, uh, February, between the first and the twenty-eighth, there are fourteen times. Uh, we worked two hundred hours of overtime, um, see, between events, we continued to perform, perform maintenance, repair, service plow trucks, uh, after each event. And we received roughly eleven hundred ninety-five tons of road salt that had to be pushed out. Uh, again, with the snow, with the continuing to have to remove snow from fire, high-risk, gas stations, intersections, turnarounds, and coal stacks. Um, we dealt, uh, we had a lot of long-duration storms, mainly freezing rain events that went on for twelve hours at a time. You know, it causes you to constantly run the roads, scrape entry, um, you know. I think there was one event, the last one we had, we were, pretty much about had thirty hours invested in that last one, so. Unit fifty-two, we lost the material conveyor, so we had to replace the material conveyor, gearbox, front shaft, sprockets, bearings, rear shaft, bearings, sprockets, and adjustment cylinders, uh, as of today, we have two trucks down at the highway. Unit fifty-two, again, uh, the coolant lines to the transmissions blew. Uh, that parts should be here tomorrow, we'll fix that, and then, today, we moved forty-nine out of the garage, and we noticed the brakes didn't seem to be acting right on the rear, we, we, we jacked the truck up, the, the left side spun freely, the right side didn't move at all. We took the brake, or the tires off, and we found that the bearing, the main seal went. So what seized the bearings up was scarred up the, the, uh, the hub, which ruined the brake drums, which ruined the drum. So all that stuff's being ordered to be fixed, so, we got two trucks, but we still have a, we have a truck at the airport, if we do get in a bind, that we can go get.
Well, I'm very thankful that you have, uh, you have the boys, men that work for you, that can do that fixing, the one thing that's descended, the machinery elsewhere, they're deserving.
But it's, it's, it's not, you know, obviously, these repairs are not cheap, you know, you start getting the, you know, hubs and bearings, it's, it's costly. It's, we're not in a very good business of making money, I guess. They always tell me, well, you spend all the money, right, Tom?
That's right. You spend all the money.
And in the meantime, they actually, the highway guys, uh, we had a broken, uh, uh, wing cable on, that we call Airport Fifty-two plow truck, so they fixed that yesterday. Uh, we had to take the wing off, and replace the ships and the, uh, the cable on that, that's back in service as of last night, so.
Don't worry, Frank, spring is coming.
Spring's coming, yeah, yeah. Um, boutique air, uh, for, for February, uh, they basically had five, total five hundred eleven between deplane and in, again, deplane and inplane. Um, obviously, with the weather conditions, there was twenty-eight planes canceled for weather, and other was twenty-three. Uh, somebody asked a question when we talked about, I think the last board meeting, about, um, fixed-based aircraft, what other airports have around us? Augsburg has eight, the minimum's ten. Uh, Potsdam has twelve, San Onofre Lake has seventeen, alone has twelve, and obviously, Messina has five. So, well, those are the numbers, somebody asked that question, and I didn't have that answer, but went on about. Um, obviously, you know, after we get, have the snow events, we have to maintain runways, taxiways, uh, during the weather months, uh, perform maintenance on equipment. Uh, we had to replace a blown hydraulics and a fifty-five plow truck. Uh, we've had several issues with our lighting at the airport. About three weeks ago, we lost all the lights on nine-two-seven runway. And we lost the east end of taxiway A, so we have our main runway, it was still functional. Um, the issue with everything at the airport is buried in the ground, so in the middle of February, when it's been below zero, the cans are froze in the ground where the connections are, it's very difficult to work on lights. Um, then, two days after, a week later, I get a call saying we lost the west end of two-three. So we found, we got lucky, they, we found that problem, it was a burned-up transformer, we got that fixed, uh, we worked with Baseline King last Friday. We got the lights back on the nine-two-seven and the east end of taxiway A, well, the east end of taxiway A's gone out again, but we still have nine-two-seven, so we do have two runways that we can land on at night, that's the biggest concern. So, um, Baseline King is a subcontractor for the terminal project, uh, this year, that will start somewhere around the, the end of May. They will come up, and there's a, we found a wire that needs to be replaced, which you gotta, obviously, we're gonna excavate to get that, and dig it up to get the east end of, uh, AVAC on.
That was the Jim King?
Jim King, yep, yep.
Wait, can I tell you, I wish we cloned him and had him in Messina.
Yeah, yeah. Um, they're out of, they're, they're from down near Utica, he, I, he was coming up to help us, but then I told him we lost east end of five, he says, I'll get two guys right there, he's helped us a lot, they, they really come up. He goes, the only reason I come here is because I like you guys, I don't like it, but yep, so. So, um, so we've got some work left to do, but we, we have at least two runways, uh, that, you know, obviously, for nighttime weddings, are, are still open. Um, and we have a, we lost a, basically, the big floor, we lost one of the dual wheels on the front of the board, the bearing went, and the wheel went, so we boarded those parts, and then it'll be coming. Uh, no issues at the library that I'm aware of, uh, no issues at the museum, and no major issues at the town hall. Um, we're starting to see diesel fuel prices, uh, they're going, they've gone up a dollar in the last two weeks in between deliveries. Um, I'm trying to get a feel for where asphalt's gonna be, up here at seventy dollars a ton. Um, we, we use seaside, uh, pulseifier to clean our tools and our trucks for asphalt. Last year, we were paying about two thousand dollars for a fifty-five gallon drone, it's four thousand dollars this year, so it's, uh, it may affect, or may, and we were down to one point four miles, and maybe we could last this year by the time we, if it keeps going that way, so, just those ways where. We're starting to see the price increases. We're still not, you know, I think if you go downtown and buy diesel, it's five something, you know, we're still way under, because it's state, it's state-led numbers, so.
Is there a way to buy the asphalt now, and pick it up later?
They're playing. They're not even open.
We can't. Oh, but future lock-in of prices.
It's county bid, it's already on the bid, county bid number, and it's, it's gonna be a lot, say, if you were to go buy it, it'd be a very big double price.
She fixed your driveway last year.
We were at the, getting some bids the other day, specifically about piping, we can't be, um, get, uh, the plastic piping, it's gonna be half of what you should be able to get, twice the price. I think the piping's the cost of, we use about seventy cents a foot, and it's up to two dollars and fifty cents a bar.
And you can only get half?
Half, yeah, a truck load is only a half a load. So we're starting to, we're starting to see the increases, fit, heads.
Okay, Messina Electric.
Messina Electric Board met February twenty-second, um, through January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two, MED has been five hundred and fifty-three days without a lost client in trade. So that's not gonna work, if you keep going that way. January, there were seven trouble calls that affected either zero or one customer, and nine that affected multiple customers. Most of their calls due to either utility flows being damaged by vehicle accidents, um, or by transformer overloads. And that led to another discussion about the number of transformer overloads, and they're finding a big increase in people using space heaters in poorly insulated residences, so that, of course, requires a lot more energy. Let's see, two of the current employees are finishing up their apprenticeships, which is a great thing. Uh, when they're all done, this will result in eight linemen and six journeymen, so it's good staffing for them. Um, MED's cost of purchasing power beyond the NiPA contract increased in January, and is reflected in higher bills to customers, uh, but we had a continuation of the numerous below-zero temperatures, so. And in light of the robbery at Messina Savings and Loan on February seventh, um, MED met with staff and reviewed all of their security procedures, and they plan to do a tabletop exercise, um, on how they would deal with some kind of similar situation, so that's good. Um, they'll be meeting again tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, maybe.
Yeah, they'll have their audit presentation held as well. Thank you.
Uh, library?
Uh, library met last week. February numbers were up from, obviously, when COVID was in place, but, uh, still a short, uh, month, and, obviously, the bad weather, uh, so circulation was down a little bit. But going forward, they are opening a lot of their programs that they had closed during COVID. So they are getting more people back into the library and getting those programs up and running, which is a good thing. Um, and they're continuing to apply for grants, which is also a positive thing. Uh, Elaine has been doing her training for that grant I spoke on last month, and she's getting ready to kick off the program, This Ball, for the elders, uh, teaching computer work for that, that grant that you received from last month. But other than that, it was a smooth month, thank God, and, uh, things are going well.
Good, thank you. Uh, Izzy?
Izzy, that board met on March tenth. Joe McCauley, who's our president, reviewed information on the DRI grant, awarded to the village. Uh, they'll continue to look on, uh, some assistance in filling out the application for clubs. He went, and went through the application with us, and initially, it's not as complex as what we were concerned it could be, so, they were hoping to get that worked on. They approved the lease for the storage base at the mall, and they're going to, um, sort through, assess, re-assess what, um, things will go. And they're hoping to do some kind of display in front windows there at the Hallmark, it's like, let's advertise the museum a little bit, and Joe would like to get a banner there. And, um, they regretfully accepted the resignation of, of Mary Ellen, but, um, she was great, she said, you know, I will help in any way I can with training, whoever's coming on board, uh, so, and her end date is a little bit negotiable, if we need her for an extra week or whatever.
Okay, so good, good to hear. Okay, thank you, um, ethics. Uh, the Ethics Board met in February twenty-eighth, and agreed to concept replace the current Code of Ethics, Chapter twenty-nine, the Model Code of Ethics for local governments, it's also known as the Model Code, promulgated by the New York State Office of the Controller. Additionally, the committee plans to update the current Appendix A Two Code of Ethics section of the employee handbook with key points contained in the Model Code. Their next meeting is April twenty-fifth, so we're gonna wait until April for the next part, we have a lot to go through right now. Cita Rescue Squad, doing everything on that, any work, maybe take that up? Do you need to tell us anything about it? Explain about the bills going back and forth.
Yeah, well, the bills I have been putting in for twenty-one, but, we might. Yeah, well, the bills have been put in for twenty-one, but we might see some from twenty-one, because we've been known not to get them at the correct time. Right now, I think we're good, but I don't know if some of them are gonna come back to us.
Is there any review of the income that might come in from last year, is that part of our income, does that offset these bills or does that account for that?
No, Kevin and I are working with that, um, PAV is splitting things for us, so the last transfer I did was up until the end of the, of February, but we still have more coming in.
Did we, have we been receiving anything from those August outstanding things that PAV wasn't able to build?
Um, I'd have to check the one that came in now, um, we, I still get them monthly from PAV, and I think Kevin's getting them electronically, so we get together, and they're splitting them there, they got town and Messina for twelve thirty-one, and then they have, um, Bill and Joe Messina after one one.
Okay.
There's a lot of write-offs.
Forty-some odd, um, outstanding patient care reports that have been drawn to August.
And you only have ninety days of, 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 of.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's over ninety days, so. Okay. Uh, joint recreation?
Uh, they met last week also, same day they, the rec means a three, library rates a four. Um, as I reported last month, negotiations with the staff are ongoing, the next work session is March thirtieth. Um, the ICE is staying in longer this year, um, because the, uh, Rundown Club has pushed their date back for their expo. So what that, well, is a benefit to that is, Mike and Cave has started another house league, so we get income from ICE rental. So it looks like they're gonna try to keep it into March, uh, May, May first, so they have a whole nother extra month of ICE rentals, which will be a nice income. Um, they, they have, they hosted several large tournaments, which brought in teams from Colchester, Vermont, um, the Glens Falls area, and one out towards Buffalo, I can't remember the name, you probably know, um, but, um, so they, a benefit to that is, again, like the mega reunion and fishing tournaments, we're bringing people into town, and they had four or five teams from out of town, and they tried to keep it so it's a two or three day tournament, so people have to stay overnight, so it was a win-win for the town again. So that's a, that was a plus, uh, again, those tournaments are being well attended now because COVID is lighting up, so they're seeing the transition to that too, so. Things are going well, negotiations will continue going on and we'll keep you up to date and that.
Good, that's great. Uh, this is development preparation?
Didn't have a meeting, they didn't have a forum.
There's no forums.
And I haven't got, we haven't received a date when they're gonna do another one, perhaps?
No, we haven't, we haven't gotten an agenda either.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce, uh, order directors met in February seventeenth, the usual bills for water and utilities repaid, the grant that was submitted to support the summer concerts in the park is expected to find less than the rule in March. Take care of the events, I'll call your lineup tomorrow, we're doing a Zoom, but who am I'll be attending? They're proposing a request of twenty-five hundred dollars for the village to co-op promotion and advertising, letters were sent to members for dues announcing sponsorship opportunities for the concerts, discussed all sorts of golf tournament, and several activities are mentioned relevant to the mega reunion for the first weekend of August. Um, the next meeting is tomorrow, noon on Zoom, so we'll find out when that is there.
How long is that mega reunion supposed to last, is it a week?
Three days.
Three days.
Three days, awful lot of activities happening, forget it.
It is.
This guy's graduating meetings are key posts, I guess.
I don't know, someone's graduated the seventh.
I also want to point out that we're getting a report from Don Meister and what he's doing each, each month, and also make sure you take a look at Explore Messina with Jason Hendricks, he sent us a solid report, um, what, uh, what we're concluded, what he's working on, and I appreciate all that he's doing for us on the website.
We, uh, Adrian and I had a meeting with Don.
DeGiozino?
Yes.
Oh, good.
At my house, uh, we had a conference call with the CEO of Major League Fishing, uh, working on the logistics of the big fishing tournament that's coming here, this, the national tournament that's coming here. Uh, we have been meeting roughly every two weeks or so, is it, Adrian?
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's going good, uh, we, our next meeting will be a marketing meeting, which now will start including Jason Hendricks.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
We're continuing, we're pumping forward, uh, we are, uh, researching, they're having a big tournament right now in West Press, and so we'll be reaching out to them and seeing how, what went right for them and what didn't go right for them, and so we can, you know, learn from them.
You may want to add fishing to our, let's take up the city rescue squad. And, and put on, uh, maybe Jason, explore Messina, fishing with Tommy, because that's always good to get updated, that people know what's going on.
Okay.
Um, if there's no other business, uh, we need to go into an executive session for a couple reasons. Uh, one is related to pending our current litigation, the other one is the medical financial credit for our public history, technical first appropriation, related to appointment of promotion discipline or removal. So, and, okay?
Second.
And that was Tom, all in favor for the executive? Okay. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, Brenda needs to stay in just a couple minutes for the executive session, um, and then, uh, Frank, if you could be outside a couple, then you come in, I know you've got a couple issues relative to the same things I just mentioned. Um, you probably won't have some action after, um, the executive session. Um, but, we'll get the, we'll get it written out, we'll take the notes from that, and Janice will be there, and John will be there. Um, we can send the report maybe to, uh, Bob and Jeff, would you like that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Dan, can you get that, for the number of motions, uh, make sure Bob and Jeff are telling us. Do you know both their emails? I know they pop off my screen quicker when I start.
I should just.
Okay, very good. Okay.
So, I'll have it on.
Oh, yes, thank you. Is there any other comment?
Uh, I think.
Questions about the trust?
Looks like there's one up there on the Zoom.
Oh.
For, uh, Pat.
Can you read that, Dan?
Oh.
Thank you for Pat Backdover, attending the Messina Monday Lunchroom Club's guest speaker, Johnny Gusserson.
Oh, thank you, I, I appreciate it, I appreciated the invite.
And, and Johnny also spoke at our brother club meeting yesterday, we had a lot of people attending, and he's quite a very likable young man, um, it was great hearing all he had said, very interesting.
Takes after his dad. I was gonna say, who goes to his mother, bringing him up like that?
It was, it was a very good presentation of whatever, he had a good crowd there.
That's, that's all over the place, you're kind of busy here.
Yeah, that's right.
He's gotta be back at the lake class at work.
He really appreciates the support that he got from Messina, so he's more than happy to come and visit, tell people about his experience, he's, he's incredibly grateful for his hometown.
Anything else, Bob or Jeff?
He is gonna be at the Nature Center Saturday, right?
He is, indeed.